We have a motion to authorize the President of Council to execute an agreement to purchase the property at 216 Darby slash Bar Hill Road, AKA Lot Block 255-N-233 and as in condition for present and future public purposes under a general warranty D for a price not to exceed $100,000 plus inc. cost subject to an appraisal confirming the value of the price and with the other customary terms. If anybody wants to know where Lot Block 255-N-233 is next door.
Next door?
Yes.
What?
There's a motion.
Oh my goodness.
Bruce, not second. And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, now we're right. So you have the authority to say? Yes, there's an offer and we have first one.
It's on the way, it's on the Palatine County Road site at 85.
All right, committee reports. Bruce?
I have my report, sir.
Finance, you know.
The issue is to choose your pocket. The general funding is $1,000,6759.81. Sewer funding, $404,483.75. Garbage fund, $20,652.24. Capital improvement, $25,119.96. Link for fuel, $184,867.65. We receive a check, normally when we used to attend to the convention, set a screen, they give us the check. I was a delegate at all for many, many years. MRM, what MRM is, it's municipal grant. Bunch of us, municipality, we got together and I remember in Mill Lady, the man come right the next door over there to collect it. Municipality to congregate the insurance, we have our own insurance for this. Instead the company to have the dividend, the dividend go to us, to all the municipality according to the amount and so forth. We've been paying the premium quite a few years from this. The work compensation as well, depending on the case we have here. Anyway, we got $23,439.69 from Work to Come. That's back to us. And we got property liability trust dividend received, $27,657.79. The amount of $61,096.48. And I was very happy in Mill Lady to be one of my votes to agree of this. So, as you know, I've been going a long time ago. So, this was a good thing. And we have millions, millions dollars in Astro. There's a big, big company, as all of us, we spent quite a few. And if you have a lot, the only risk is just like any insurance. If you have a lot, a lot, a lot of problem, then they just throw you out. Every insurance does that. Oh, there is a premium, obvious, give us money. But anyway, we should be proud. More municipalities should join this because it's an excellent thing to do. But thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Jason.
Well, parks are full swing right now. Baseball, soccer, and everything else is on. Partial proof that the grass is cut.
He's going to help me.
I throw all fix. Pass some holes down there, may ask over. All good.
They need to consider racing for the hockey. We purchased it.
See, anyone can hear that?
It was, uh...
This is because this...
Yeah, money's in the budget, so we purchased it, so now the guys just have to send it up.
So, what you talked about is down at the Chertier, the McLaughlin Park, the tennis courts weren't being used and they're making into a little hockey area for kids. That's cool.
That is the official home ice, lumberjack hockey.
Yeah.
The reigning champions of the Chertiers Valley Street Hockey League.
Nice.
So, some guys get it together and everybody...
All right, Public Parks, Bill, Lucy.
Well, they get the parks looking good, they're getting looks good on Front Street. So, they're doing their job.
Public Safety, Bill Henderson.
Just based on some of the comments, I think we'll get a public safety maybe scheduled for this next month. It's got so many issues that you guys have raised. And then I'd prefer to achieve for his, uh, his, uh, public safety.
Mr. Mayor.
It is my distinct honor to proclaim May 20th as Amy Perkins Day. Amy will be turning 100 and has been a lifelong resident of Bridgeville and a wonderful asset to our community. So, it is just one of the great things that we have here. Very honored to proclaim May 20th, 2015, as Amy Perkins Day. With regards to Bauer Hill Road, I did not think that the issue would come as quickly as it has as to, you know, needing to do something about Bauer Hill Road. We have over the last months talked about, gee, it really should be Pendott's, it really should not be Bridgeville's road. Because the road is a regional arterial roadway that is used by the region. But we are, how do we get it to be, how do we get Pendott to take it over?
How do we give it back to them?
How do we give it back to them? And my thought, and I have not discussed this with any of you, but my thought is that this would be an opportune moment for council, for someone on council, to make a motion to resolve that Bridgeville Borough turned Bauer Hill Road over to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. I don't see any downside to making such a motion. And it puts it, and it puts it very square that that's what the opinion of council is. If you don't want that, uh...
Just, just so that we know, is it a common, common road or a county road?
Okay, it's on the state.
It's on the state, right? So, we're asking state to take the common road.
Correct.
Okay.
I think, uh...
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a motion to discuss it? Are you in discussion?
Tom, is it something that...
I think it's kind of sensitive. Council motion, I interpreted as you thought making a resolution to ask us to vote into, uh, what can we do?
Yeah, I think it's...
Should we divest ourselves? Should we, should we, should we, uh... To divest, yeah, what's our ability and how do we go about if we can't divesting ourselves of future responsibility for Bauer Hill Road?
Can you summarize the fuss?
I suppose there are sensitivities.
Can you summarize the fuss about Bauer Hill Road? Cause I'm not up to speed on it. Bauer Hill is broken up. Needs some new asphalt, need paving. But Bauer Hill Road is primarily a regional arterial road. And we're hoping that maybe Pendott will take it over. As opposed to the residents of Bridgeville having to pay the costs.
But what happened several years ago, the county went around and asked municipalities to take over maintenance of it. But it wasn't disclosed as the depth of the maintenance of it. And it was basically palming it in winter time, making sure it was taken care of and earning more than the cost of way out of hand. And we've tried in the past to get the county, tell them, you take care of it, it's not ours anymore. And that's what they're referring to is to try to give roads back to pass asking for Pendott, but we'll see what happens.
I think, I bet you know, that's not entirely Bauer Hill Road. That's from PJ to up here.
You got a block on my road?
That's from, yeah.
To the top of Washington Avenue.
We always do care of that and they pay us. But one point in time, they say, look, take this road and sometime we make mistakes, sometime we don't.
That's been like many, many years.
It's a big, maybe, when they say we, they're quite a mother government, they've been here. So, we all in the same boat.
And the other side is, is we usually take care of the salt and that on the other side and down to the borough's land.
And then they discontinued that. We, we were paid a stipend, just as we off the Pendott roads, to take care of from McLaughlin to the Bridgeville Borough line going toward up to St. Clair. And the county discontinued that. So, now they maintain that to McLaughlin Road. And then we maintain from McLaughlin to Bauer Hill. The issue that we have with that is that we, of course, get to things quicker than they do. But we call them and they, they get there. So, um, but, um, yeah, I mean, we can look into...
Yeah, well, there's, there's, there would be, there's an issue. And there's many times when Bauer Hill Road, they don't get over here soon enough. But we are public court, we make sure that our residents, we issue is...
I don't know. It's, it's hard to issue.
It's the road bed.
Yeah.
Full plowed for free.
Take a bet.
All right, here's a motion, so...
Yeah, Bauer Hill was stable before they dug that trench side. Cause when Warren was here, he had machines in there, he undermined everything. That's why we're having all these problems. No, I'll tell you right now, I watched it. It's not right, give it back. You can't, you couldn't afford fixing that place.
Again, it's not as, I mean, I'm sure it's not as easy to say here of yours, but let's all, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pat. Thank you. Anything else? Well, that's all. Police Chief, Chad King.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have much, other than I had word from my secretary today that Swank Construction contacted us to make us aware that sometime around May 27th, there's going to be road construction on Washington Avenue from St. Clair Street to Chertier Street. I don't know what time yet and I don't know the duration or lane restrictions, but once that's learned, we'll post it on our Facebook page.
It's going to be nighttime work.
It is?
When they contacted me last year to let us know that that portion of the roadway was going to be paved, there, it's impossible for them to do that during the day. So, just as the other, the other portion was paved to the northern end, it will be done at night. And that will also include the new striping that we decided incorporated from our meetings with Pendott down at Hickman Street. And the double lanes, so turn lane down there, so, but it will be at night. It'll be a little news to the residents that have apartments there, but they'll get through there pretty quick doing the work at night.
Did they give an estimate for the duration of the project?
No, they haven't.
Okay.
They haven't let us know yet that they're coming, so I would guess that we should know pretty quick as far as what they think and I'll let you know.
He estimated today around the 27th, so, like I says, we learn more, we post it to our Facebook page.
That'll be that too, Lord.
That's it.
Just a word, the Facebook page is great. I mean, you're getting information out to the community. If you haven't seen it, I'd urge you to, if you're on Facebook, to friend at least a friend.
Is that reminds me, did you find the owner of the bunny?
No, no one came forward. But it's, we believe it's been adopted to a safe home by its point.
It was a little tough, Austin, tougher. Did you see that? I wish you recovered it.
Nice job.
Solicitor, Congressman.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have my written report, just a couple notes on the zoning ordinance, um, review. We have the agreement with EPD executed in April. We have a scheduled timeline, ten people put together. I think it's going to be circulated this week. It puts us on a four to five month schedule, which is consistent and pretty impressive and consistent with what we had anticipated, some of the schedule. And we are scheduled actually to meet with the planning commission for the first time to give them an overview and kind of get involved on at that level on May 18th. And in addition, had the opportunity this month to assist to Chilio, pardon, with their loan documentation for their aerial truck and also to have put together a social media policy for them. Joe cites those areas management, I continue to follow closely the consent decree issues regarding sanitary sewers, following up on the extensions that were renewed at the end of March, conditioning by, by ACHD and the follow-up legislative position by the DEP. We are in the process of trying to define what the significance of those two are, letters will be for us and culmination as are all the other communities. So, it's kind of stay tuned right now, we'll have a better idea next month of where things are going to be in the next council. And that's all I have as a report.
Thank you, Tom. Engineer, Chris Sikes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite a few things here, the 2015 paid maintenance program, the contracts have been sent to the, they'll be ready for execution. Once they return, they're gonna sign by the Borough here to get a reconstruction meeting. Pennsylvania American Water has to do the trench restoration before we do the early work. We're still working on cleaning up some loose end of the 2014 sanitary sewer CCTV inspection and cleaning with Jet Check. Once that works completed, we can finalize the project. 2015 sanitary sewer repair, the operation and maintenance, soil like instructions that worked for the last two weeks with the repairs and they're about 40% complete. We expect them to be done probably early June. With that work, it works moving along at a very nice pace without any issues. The contracts with sanitary sewer line, contract with Jet Check are in the process of being executed. Once they're executed, we'll have a reconstruction meeting as well as the 2015 sanitary sewer CCTV inspection and cleaning. Those contracts have, are in the process of being executed inside pipe. That'll take care of our year five, the operation and maintenance related to the consent order. The ADA door openers here at the municipal building, so we have handicap accessibility here to the front doors. Shore West Club made a motion to award the contract automated entrance systems in the amount of $11,170. With all that funding that's coming from the Shore West Club for that part, if there's no funds from the Borough related to that project. But you've all around pond growing green interface two grant application. We submitted a grant application, estimated a cost of $488,510, which is a 50% match. And that's to give us a new parking lot down there in McLaughlin Park, five pool pavilions, drinking fountains, and some additional skate park equipment down there to enhance the park.
Sure, go ahead.
As a note, we have days to plan for the park, which is 10 years old. This is a launch here, but we can use that pen, so that's why we've applied.
And then the Chertier Street, Washington Avenue, Chertier Street, Bridge intersection, we've worked with Pendott, scheduling a meeting in June to review all the information submitted, including refined cost estimates, plans, and applications for funding. We recently submitted a CITF gaming fund grant for the portion to widen that section of Chertier Streets between the intersection and the, and the Warner Avenue. As well have, that's in the book, they're busy.
Thank you very much, Phil. Chief Chilio.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Where's our fire truck?
I've got pictures.
I know.
It's still, it'll be going up for June 4th right now for final inspection, so look like it should be here for Community Day for everybody to see on that. I'd like to, from the fire department, thank everybody in attendance to the cash patch. We had 490 people in the door. Missed my goal by 10. Did very well, it was a good night, everybody had a really good time at night. And thanks again to the chief for letting us have an officer. One thing I do want to elaborate a little bit tonight on, and I'm sure people in the town have seen the WTA news segments and all that. We were not brought up in any of that, which is fine. We don't have any real issues down at our fire department to let our residents know, but just a little education, what do our guys, our people do down in Bridgeville? You know, we, when you come in, you have to go through a class to become a firefighter. Takes 188 hours out of your life to get done, become a firefighter. On top of doing that, you enter fire calls, you come work to bingo for five, six hours a night every week. We do the cash patch, we do fish fries. Plus, every Thursday is either a meeting or a drill down our fire department. The people down there put a very, very lot of time in and dedication. Are our numbers down? Yes. You know, we're not like we used to be years ago with the number of people in there. We do very well, we hold our own with our numbers. Our runtimes are within the limits that are needed. You know, we're, we're here for the town, we're there. I mean, students up there and out here see us there. So, as the chief, you know, we have a good bunch of people down there that are very dedicated. It's time to make sure that those pieces are out within a decent amount of time. Do we take longer than others? Yes. Because depending on the call severity is how we respond. And I'll use an example, if you have a CO alarm going off in your house and nobody's sick or anything like that, while we don't rush to get down to station, there's not a life-threatening situation there. So, we don't want the people getting in an accident going down the station, we don't want them getting in an accident with the truck compared to having a house burning with somebody in it. Two different categories. So, call like that, yes, our response times will take a little longer because the people are just taking their time getting down there and using their head. That's probably the best way to say it. But when there is something bad, we're there, we're there really quick. Last week, we had a possible apartment fire gram retires and the equipment was out in a very decent time for that, that was during the day. One thing we're very fortunate of down the fire department is, I have a lot of people that work shifts. So, we always have some people always around, so as a confidence. Mr. Miller here next to me, some of my members put along work, actually with him, it's their full-time job. So, when they're not with him, they're with me. So, we're standing hand in hand, but I have a lot of shift work. We average probably for a call, I'm gonna say about seven, eight people on a call. That's an average. Some calls are down, some calls are higher, so that's the purpose of an average. But I just wanted to kind of little reiterate what we do down the fire department, the time we put in. You know, the people put in a lot of time in one week down there to protect this town and what we do. And to work to get the equipment on top of the Borough helping us and working with us. You know, they're very helpful and know. And that's one of the reasons why we're getting a new fire truck with the help of the Borough. You know, that truck, just to let everybody know, this costed a million dollars to come in to protect this town. So, you know, but I just want to iterate a little bit about that, what's been going on on WTAE. You know, I did not get enough phone calls to speak in that, had we not, with what's going on, because they do not have their facts right. It's a good article, yes, our numbers are down as far as volunteers. But I feel me as a chief, they don't get their facts right because doesn't it take us longer to get to the fire station? Yeah, fix rush hour, don't matter where you're at, traffic's a mess. Fixing climate weather for snow, they're not gonna rush to get down here. So, those are some of the things to take in consideration, you know, with that. So, but just to let everybody know, I just want to kind of touch base on that. If anybody has any questions, I'm glad to help them out after the meeting with that. You guys up there, did I miss anything? I work a lot with you guys up there hand in hand.
Your response times vary good.
Question, Paul.
Yeah, I think it's a good time for me to, hey, those guys compliment, a month ago, there was a waterline person, Bridgeville Towers condominium, set off the alarm and 100 older people had to walk down the, the elevator shut down, 100 people had to walk down the stairwell, it's the floor. The bells were deafening, everybody was standing around with their hands, their ears, there was general panic. Five minutes after 911 was called, we'll shut up, it's one police officers, analyze the problem, solved in five minutes and averted a, a real serious situation.
Excuse us one thing, thanks, Paul, on that. On top of what I just said, what we do with all our time, I think of the major part, our fire department in Bridgeville averages between 200 and 250 fire calls a year. So, on top of doing all the training and everything else and the fundraising all year long, we handle between 200 and 250 fire calls for a 1.1 square mile town. So, that's a lot. So, thank you, thank you again, Paul.
You're welcome. South Bridge, Jim Moore.
Hi, Mr. President. I have provided statistics to the board. We also wanted to bring up on April 24th, last month, representative from the Pennsylvania Emergency Health Services Council, who also represents Pennsylvania Department of Health, gave South Bridge recognition for advanced pediatric standards. Basically, South Bridge has exceeded the basic bar set by the state and we've hit the highest level they've set for pediatric standards. What that basically means is we have additional equipment then required. We do background checks that are in addition to what are required by the state. We do training in-house, four hours every year for all our people. And we also do community outreach on the basis of pediatric, like pediatrics, we are classed with Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and things, and Community Day, so we're just kind of need to get that. So, your animals are riding around and see a sticker on the side of our truck that says we've, we've hit the mastula.
Excellent. Congratulations. Library, Slidman.
Hi, I'm here tonight just to say we held our third annual Taste of the Town at the Bridgeville Fire Hall and we had a wonderful evening. And thanks to Ray, he did a wonderful job, he's getting better and better and better.
It's great.
We had a lot of fun, the organization was good, the participants in the community, the restaurants was absolutely wonderful. And one of the things that I would like to ask, is I would like to have a meet and greet with the Borough Council representation and I'd like to know who I could speak with to set that up so that I can have a very good attendance. I'd like you to meet some of our library personnel, look at some of the technology in the library, you've been really helpful in supporting the library, even more so this last time. And who could I work with to get that set up?
Well, that was great.
And how do I reach you? Cause I have used your email, but I didn't get a response. The council email, is that not a good place to go?
Yeah, I'll give you my email.
Okay.
Can you catch me up with me?
That'd be great. But thank you, Bridgeville, it was wonderful.
Or I'd catch him, you're welcome.
A nice evening and good deal music.
Borough Manager.
I provided a little, um, any questions?
Anything?
Um, one of the things that I did want to mention was, I know that whether outside is 90 degrees, well, we're already moving at a 2015 rock salt bit.
Right.
And we're, it's in the process of being prepared by the shake hog, which we utilize there and join in with the other municipalities, the shake hog each year. The new bid documents have changed a little, that they're including a line item for pre-winter fill. And what this is, is this is so that when it starts to get bad and everybody starts to call and then you have delayed in delivery, that if there's a pre-winter fill, that we can take some salt ahead of time and store it, that we would get a discounted price. So, that's going to be part of the new bid, we're not sure how that's gonna work out. I had to... I had to provide estimates, sparkle we could take, which right now we're holding about two hundred, so we could take two fifty more, and that would happen to be taken between August first and August thirty first, and that again, that would be a discounted price. I've also increased our estimated tonnage from seven hundred and fifty tonne to nine hundred. We're required to purchase eighty percent of that, but if our winters continue like this, we need that, and we can purchase up to one hundred and twenty-five percent at the same price without going over, and if you, after you go over one twenty-five, then the price increases. So there's a little change in that, in the way that they're doing this this year, but it may be beneficial, we'll see, but they did not want to continue on to, to next, sometimes with the technology, we're looking at that. So that information's already been submitted to the Shake Club. Also, I'd like to meet with the administrative committee, we did place, I think everybody saw in the news, like, we did place the two designs for the signs, to get some input from the community as well as business outreach, so, and it's been awful, we're hoping to get a little more input, otherwise we could be administrative committee, maybe make that recommendation on the design, so that we can resell the construction documents, and start to apply for grants, to get out and try and get started on those.
Is there a, one, one more than the other?
No, they're even.
Really?
Because what's happening is some of the people that like the red are saying, I like the red, but I can move the white though, and therefore they're more, they're more busy.
It's more of a color design.
So, so we like to get together with that, so we can get moving right now. The last thing that I had is, I got a letter from my Sylvester Computers partnership, questioning if boroughs interested in participating in a new regional transportation direct district study, and we showed we wish to participate, we were going to set up a meeting, I would let individuals know that we weren't participating. In their letter, they stated that they are requesting financial assistance also, so that matters to be noted, that, that was right.
Are they aware that we're?
I'm not sure, so that's why.
Yeah.
They said, if we were interested in talking about it, they would leave with us, and I think that we have to get together with them, so they know what we're doing also, so, as long as I have council's okay, go ahead with that. And then, anything else, do you have questions?
Thank you. Old business.
Do you use how much stock did we use last year?
We, um, let's see. We used one thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, so you're looking at nine fifty, okay, so that puts you into the one point five.
So, it's, you know, it's kind of, sometimes, you know, we've had winters where we use practically nothing, and then we've had winters where we, you know, it was ridiculous, so it's kind of a guessing game, we have never, we have never estimated more than seven fifty, so I thought it was pretty, pretty aggressively, so hopefully.
Right, one of the things with, again, that's parlayed for the last year, is talking to other municipalities about using the line.
Yes.
And I can't remember what the end-up program is, where we can swap services.
The.
The agility program.
I tried to teach them, I don't know if they're about the agility program, do you know what we can do, and what we're trying to do, so we know what we're trying to do.
I think council will be good for, maybe take a look at that, especially with regards to the concept of maybe moving some of the line, and a number of municipalities have seen positive things.
There's a money. God, whose belly is big as a lion?
We actually, I had an opportunity to actually help in the acquisition, we put it out there, the program, you got to be able to personally talk to the, the manager, just on the conversation app, and credit, which is how quickly it actually takes, it pays itself, because the efficiency, it's, you know, you're not name-hormoned the roads, it's more surgical, and you got to assist them, and actually have to talk to another fellow, and second-class leadership, you know, some of the PPW sites here, we're on form, so, they actually talk to them soon.
Yeah, I mean, we have a little bit of jam downstairs.
Yeah, so, it's kind of low tech, and a couple municipalities have actually had folks have, basically, built a.
Not even, upper nectar. Was it upper nectar? Nord's Fair to tell me, and comes immediately, that they would be more inclined to come here and use that machine. Yeah, that's right. Because at the car, we discussed that practically, especially when every minute, so, maybe we should have Nord's Fair to come over here, was a beginning, and ask council people assisting the operation, we should do that. I can read that, read.
Up the line, sure.
Tree catcher, is there any news on that?
I've been trying to get a hold of the county conservation industry since last week, getting answers, and strong return on my phone calls, as soon as I know something, you will know.
You gotta get that going, because they got them trees laying up there.
Yeah, they asked for additional information on that, so, and it was submitted, so, as soon as we get the.
Any answers?
The car lock, we need these in charge, we don't have all the.
Old business? Was that old? All right, new business, but yes. No one else has mentioned it, so, congratulations, the cesspool behind, behind the northern place, putting it, behind the fire department, has been relocated down to the creek, it is complete, good job, to, there are some, Solicitor, I'm getting the right of way, our engineer, I'm getting it done, our manager for moving it forward, so thank you.
We actually, I got a copy of the letter to approve, to go down, the county today saying that this thing's.
Yes, good, all right. Anything on new business? I got a real quick, you Bob, a real quick question, you got something out of last week of like two thousand cars a day up on Banners?
Yes.
Where'd you get that number?
I, I got it from.
Is it, and it wasn't two, was it two thousand cars a day, a week?
No, two thousand cars a day, that's a necessary.
Where did that, is that?
No, it's a necessary, I'll tell you where, how I got it. I called a couple of universities, University of Texas, Minnesota, Minnesota, I asked them how many trips a day go to the average, and they said ten to twelve, I'm sure that the kids that saw it.
Yeah.
So I assumed, I assumed that the people in the million and a half dollar home probably generate, more people probably have, maids, babros, parties, things of that nature, so I assumed myself.
We did a study, we did a trial, a thousand, every thousand cars.
It was about a thousand per day.
Yeah, I just want to make sure our information wasn't.
No, your research is probably more accurate.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we have a hundred and twenty-five homes, as you stated, and there is a threat, I give them four-car garage, I'll give them four-car person, okay? There's no way we can come to two thousand cars. I know they'll all go out in the morning, work, they'll all come back, and then there is the wife, they, they're the shop, and they come back, so, to me, that's wrong. One more thing I'd like to clear for the record, DP did, the DP did devise the permit for the clover, Mr. Mahoney, Mark Mahoney, has those, so you, you should get your team really straight, well, you said something, because if you can't just say that, some work is done with not permit, it's not true, but Mark Mahoney holds those permits.
Nina.
Oh, check them, check your tweets.
Excuse me, Nina, I, Nina, I did, I contacted after the, after we measured the culprit.
There were a lot on the proof for that.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'd like to respond to your accusation.
No, it's not accusation, it's something that, it's not accusation, that's the truth.
Do I get to respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
I called the, Ian Harrisburg, and I asked him if they had issued a permit to allow the culprit to be killed, they said no, after five minutes of searching the records, and I called the Army Corps of Engineers and asked them the same thing, they told me they likewise had no record of it, and he mentioned something about, this is Pittsburgh Army Corps, mentioned something about, there, some of the records destroyed the fire, maybe that was where the permits, so the information I had was through phone call surveys and, and one-on-one surveys, excuse me.
I've been here a long, long time, and my mind is still clear, if you were to call me instead Harrisburg, I could answer you the question, you go to Mark Mahoney, he'll show to you.
Matter of fact, Mahoney, you know what?
Oh, call Lori, we have files.
Excuse me, I exercised all of those options for the best of my ability, matter of fact, several months ago, or last year, we found out about the culprit, I went to Mahoney, he said that he was going to find the permits and then forward them to me, he, just last week, we ran into each other inadvertently, he told me that he dropped them off at the ferum six months ago, I never even knew it, I heard nothing about it, but anyway, the point was, the DDP engineer from Harrisburg and another hydraulic engineer that had a meeting here about two months ago, both verified the culprit is inadequate, however, whether it was legally permitted or whatever, it's inadequate, it's causing the flooding of Ball Street, and there's mathematics back that up, and they, I don't mean to contradict you in a hostile manner, but the facts are, the facts are research, they told me what I could play back.
Can I just make a note?
Yes, sir. You know, after our one plug, we had, I had called Chris Crowley, the local office, and he found the permit for this culprit, and said, said that the DP did issue the permit, that was just a matter of Mr. Mahoney had to transfer the name of it from himself to Bridgell Borough, so that's what he needs to do.
No, that's fine, I'm not, again, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put the blame on Borough Council, the point is, the information I got, both sources of information, DDP and Army Corps told me the records, they had no record of that, all right?
Thank you, Bob. Sure. Any other new business?
What we got to do with them walls that are falling out of Ball Street, there are garage falling in the creek, can we get in there?
The one garage, there's two garages that fell in the creek, the one garage, the property owner's going to take that off, the other, the other garage, we're going to take a look, that, actually, our building's going to be done, take a look at that, and give the property owners some ideas on how to get, to get that out, so, they're addressing it right now. Our public works department may be able to go on a, a merit of C basis, how, get that three out there, so that it doesn't go down like.
If you're going to ask for one quick material.
Yeah, and we, it's emergency because it, it's, we're aware of them, and we've already talked to them.
Okay.
Question, second, all in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody.